Good evening. This is Luke Revan, manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the township's website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for the meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter. The agenda is also visible on your screen. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking, and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as the moderator of this webinar, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature, which is located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before posing a question. I will now turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session, February 18th, 2021. Hope everyone's safe in this snow that we're having this year. Do we have, start off with the meeting with any public comment on agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, I would note that we do have an agenda item that is likely to have a number of folks in the audience who want to speak, and I draw your attention to the agenda item 6A, which is the, I'm sorry, 6B, which is the traffic study update for Hopewell Development. It'd be my suggestion that we unmute the microphones for people to make comment on that agenda item when we get to that agenda item.
Sure. Yeah, it's no problem. I'm okay with that. Is there any public comment on agenda items other than 6B?
I've had no requests to unmute microphones.
Okay. And then let's go ahead and then move on to the minutes of the previous meetings. Minutes of January 21, 2021.
Motion to accept the January 21st, 2021 Board of Supervisors minutes.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the treasurer's report and the authorization to pay bills.
Do I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report and the authorization to pay the bills?
Yep, as long as you're okay with them as listed.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, if you could just go ahead and make that motion. Sorry, George. Can you just make another motion just so it's clear?
That's okay. I will make a motion to accept our treasurer's report and the authorization to pay the corresponding bills.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, we're going to go ahead and do, I believe Joe Edwards is here. We can go ahead and, and I believe, is there any, is there any staff member that would like to go over the report? Are we going to go ahead and bundle them together? I know Joe would like to review his report to the public.
Correct. I will work on unmuting Joe. If you would like to make a motion to adopt reports A through D.
Sure. George, you want to? You want me to? It doesn't matter.
Yep, I can do it. I will make a motion to accept A through D, Township Managers' Report, the Building Inspector's Report, and the Township Roadmaster's Report.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. And Joe Edwards from the East Brandywine Fire Company, Fire Chief. Fire Marshal, I'm sorry.
I think the title is Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Edwards, I've promoted you to be a speaker. Can you, I see that your connection is muted.
Does he need to unmute himself?
Yeah, he would, there's a, so he is a presenter. At the top of his screen, he will have a blue microphone. Hey, there it is.
There it is.
Didn't even need to do my lecture.
Yeah. So, hey, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak. Last month, the East Brandywine Fire Company had 31 calls, four fire calls in East Brandywine, 10 medical calls in East Brandywine. Phenomenally, we had 13.75 members responding to each call, which, if you guys look at the volunteerism around this area and what is going on nationally, that's, that's just phenomenal. Also, we had three training sessions, and the training sessions have still been a challenge because we're doing those mostly the same way you're doing the township meeting, it's virtual, and we're still averaging 20 people per training session. So that's good. Last month, we were excited to present the building to you guys. A little update on that, there's been meetings twice a week. They were to have the pavilion and the shed down already, but due to the crazy weather, we're a little bit behind, but everything is moving along quite well. I think there's good open lines and communications, and you should see some progress, at least in the parking lot down there. The entire building inside has been cleaned out except for essential supplies. They're all in the containers you see in the side parking lot. So unless anybody else says that, I'll conclude my report for tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, I have a question for you. Have you had any issues with your volunteers as far as COVID?
George, I'm not quite sure what you're looking for from a response from me. I will say that some of our volunteers are hesitant to come out, secondary to COVID exposure and taking it back to their house. I will tell you that some volunteers have had COVID and had to quarantine. We've done a phenomenal job with not having a large outbreak. 98% of the firefighters have received their first vaccination. Many have already had their second. We anticipate the rest of the guys getting their second next week. So hopefully, what I just was able to tell you kind of got to what you were looking for.
Yeah, it was. Good job. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's move on to old business, Aspen Drive update. I can't hear you, Luke.
I fell in my own trap there. Since Roadmaster Van Lou is out in the field removing snow as we speak, I'll be playing the role of Roadmaster this evening. Included in your packet is a letter that staff is proposing to send. The letter is dated today's date and is an update on a previous discussion item for the Board of Supervisors relative to some stormwater infrastructure located on Aspen Drive. Also joining me is a township solicitor, Mark Jonas, who also did some research on this. Mark, I'd ask that at any point, you could chime in if you have any comments. I'll summarize the letter that staff is proposing to send. The bottom line is the work that the township intends to do this summer would be the resurfacing of Aspen Drive and the replacement of the pipe located between the inlets, numbers 156 and 157 on Aspen Drive. If you look at the map that's in front of you on the screen, those are the two inlets that are located on the right side of the screen. So we'd be talking about replacing the pipe represented by the green line located on the right side of your screen. The other stormwater infrastructure that's shown on the illustration in front of you, the red lines and the red points are all stormwater infrastructure that is located on private property. And at this time, staff is not recommending that we do any repairs with the infrastructure represented by those lines, polygons, and points.
Okay.
I'm fine with the letter. I read the letter, and it's been researched by our solicitor and you, and the letter seems appropriate.
I'm okay as well.
I would submit that it would be appropriate to have a motion to direct staff to send these letters. I see, I believe there is one of the property owners in the audience. I don't want to put anybody on the spot here, but I don't know if there's, there's any, let me see if there's a comment. Yep, there we go. Please stand by. I'm going to unmute one of the residents. Good evening, Mr. Melsa. Can you hear us? I have promoted Mr. Melsa, who I believe is the owner of 103 Aspen Drive, but I cannot hear him, so.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm new to this, so just bear with me here. I'm just curious. When I read the report from the company in, I believe it was Hot Town, the original report, they investigated whether or not there was state funding available for this. Now, I recognize that this is my responsibility, but if there's state funding that comes into play, will I be able to participate or get some of that refund? If I choose to get this done before I move, I want to do this in anticipation of not leaving a future owner this responsibility. So before this thing's done, it could be another year or two, I may not be here. So I may opt to have this thing fixed, but if state funding comes in, am I going to get refunded in some way? Does that make sense?
Right, so, so let's, let me.
There's two questions here. State funding and investigating.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to take a shot at responding?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you. The firm in question is Cedarville, which is our stormwater engineer. And the sources of funding have to do with our, I'm not aware of any grant program that pays for the replacement of existing storm. Well, that's, that's interesting. I don't know of any, I don't know of a grant application associated with the work that is anticipated to be performed in the summer of 2021, which is the resurfacing of Aspen Drive and the replacement of the pipe represented by the green line on the right side of the screen. There is a source of funds that we used in, for stormwater retrofits in the Culbertson Run community, and that source of funds was known as the, that was Growing Greener. We did not use any of those funds to make improvements on private property. I don't think that stormwater infrastructure located on private property would be eligible for funding with any grant program I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. So how is this going to go out to bid? I mean, when will it go out to bid? So that, say I want to tack on to it in some way, so that someone who comes in and does, does all the work might be able to give me a better price than someone just coming in to do my property?
Unfortunately, I cannot substitute for Roadmaster Van Lou on that one. He would be the one person who's familiar with the schedule for bidding this out. I would say generally, the summer of 2021. And so what would likely happen is in, say, April or May, the board would be giving staff permission to advertise a bid package for the resurfacing.
So I've had a few bids. I don't mean to take up a lot of time here, but I've had a few bids come in. Some are higher than others. Some require removal of trees on my property. I have a bunch of pine trees on my property that interfere with access to that detention area. Others are just replacing, just lining it. How do I go about introducing the company that I choose, fix this problem for me? Do I send it to Matthew, or do I send it to someone else on the board? I think we should probably have it sent to Matt and have Matt follow up with you, since he's not able to attend tonight due to the weather. Okay. Because he's going to be, he's the one that's been looking into this, and he's the one that, you know, he's, he has the facts with him in his, you know, in his office. But we have to come across, let's get. I'll be happy to forward some of the proposals I have. The board can, you know, maybe it's premature to do that. I think I'll just choose the one I want. As well. You could copy supervisors@eastbrandywine.org. You could, you could go ahead and copy the full board at supervisors@eastbrandywine.org as well. So I would, I would recommend you do that as well. Okay. All right. Thanks for your answers. No problem at all. Thank you. So I'm sorry, Luke, the motion that you would like to action item, what would you like to?
It's just a motion directing staff to mail the draft letter to the two property owners in question.
I'll make that motion. I might make a motion for staff to send out the two Aspen Drive stormwater concerns to the two homeowners in question.
No move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next agenda item is Hopewell Neighborhood, I believe. Luke, can we put that back? Is that the next agenda item? I can't see.
Yes, it is. So yeah, the next up is item five, or the traffic study for Hopewell Development, yes. I should say, just like with the last agenda item, I have some, some support in answering questions. Joining us this evening is Township Traffic Engineer, Andy Heinrich. And the agenda item was placed on the agenda at the request of Supervisor Scribner, who likewise this evening is out engaged in snow removal activities. I know of one resident who's interested in addressing the board.
I think what we should do then is why don't we go ahead and invite any and all comments from, for this agenda item in the beginning now, and then we can go ahead and, and address them as we need right afterwards. Does that, does that sound new, Luke?
Right. So yeah, just fine. Thank you. The, the person in the queue is Jennifer Radcliffe. Are you able to address?
Hey, it's Jeff Radcliffe. How's it going?
Just fine. We can hear you.
Basically, we just brought some sort of update. I feel like it's gone quiet for a while. You know, the problem is still here, and yet, you know, it's crickets. So just kind of an update where we stand, what's been done, if anything's been done, and then, and yeah, I can ask more questions from there.
Okay. Luke, you want to go ahead? I mean, I know we had, I knew, I was at the, I believe, wrong, the December 2018's Homeowner Association meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
I go, I know we've been trying to get this thing worked out. We had directed, the board at that point directed our township managers at the time, Scott Pierceall, to engage the services of Andy Heinrich, our traffic consultant, to conduct the study to find out what the core, you know, issues are as far as if it's, if it's the amount of traffic cutting through, or is it the actual, what traffic's existing is speeding and causing issues to the residents? So Andy, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well. So in this, within this traffic study, what was the main focus and what were the results?
We simply just put traffic count machines out and recorded traffic volume and traffic speed at two locations, one on Brookhaven and one on Ferndale, in the sections that cover where the concern is about short cutting and speeding traffic. And at the bottom of the screen there, pretty much summarizes the results of our studies. I think the Township Police Department has done some data collection previous. I think what we found pretty much supports or is consistent with what was done in the past. The traffic volumes are listed. There's more traffic going from Guthrie'sville to Hopewell than in the reverse direction. So that seems to be the higher, higher level of concern going eastbound, so to speak. The volumes are not excessive for residential neighborhood in a general sense, although people living along the street there may have concern about that. The speeds are very consistently with the, and traffic engineers measure what's called the fifth percentile operating speeds, and those speeds are roughly around 30 miles per hour. They're not excessively high, but they are higher than the 25 mile per hour posted speed limits. So that's basically the results of our data collection at the two locations.
So you did multiple data locations, times you did it. Like, is that from the first one pre-COVID, or when you did the one during COVID?
Yeah, these were, the, the one on Brookhaven was done pre-COVID. The one on Ferndale was done subsequent, earlier this year, I guess, during COVID. And we looked at some adjustment to that, but it didn't seem like there was all that much. When you looked, when you compared volumes between the two locations, it didn't look like there was all that much difference. A little bit more so in the eastbound direction, the, the direction of concern. Westbound, the numbers, if I recall correctly, were pretty consistent either time. So some of the short cutting traffic during COVID has apparently lessened to some extent.
Okay. It has a lot to do with COVID. Like, when I look at the Community Environmental Defense Services website, and they talk about cut through traffic, cut through traffic, especially when it's avoiding intersections to save time. The chance of incidents of people getting hit is exponentially different. So it's not just that people are cutting it through, it's why people are cutting through and what kind of do, save time. So, I mean, like, we put a police report in, I guess, three weeks ago. Like, we, the neighborhood, we parked our cars in the street to kind of slow it down. That worked for a while. And now people aren't even waiting for that. Like, three mailboxes have been hit with side view mirrors. We're crossing a crosswalk and, you know, people screaming, you, it's, it's, people are in a hurry. They're just, they're helping us.
No, absolutely. And my question, Andy, as far as, as far as just speed bumps, is that, would that, would, would we have any, if we were to say we would like to look into that option to install speed bumps there, is that going to negatively affect, would that, in a negatively effective way, actually increase the speed limit in the neighborhood?
No, it depends on how it's done. Speed humps should not be done individually. They need to be done in a series. Because it's been found that if you only put one speed hump in, after a vehicle crosses a speed hump, speeds are actually higher than they were pre-speed hump. We need to provide a series of speed humps along both Brookhaven and Ferndale. They have to be situated, obviously, to avoid being in front of individual driveways. They need, they're best located on straight sections. They do cause ponding during weather such as today, so you have to be careful to provide gaps in the speed humps so that drainage, there's positive drainage to avoid icing, things of that nature. And of course, we're in a residential neighborhood. Speed humps cause noise by traffic bouncing over them. And then finally, I would strongly urge that emergency management be brought into this because emergency vehicles, their time is cut down by having to slow down on speed humps. There are speed humps out there. There are designs out there where you can provide grooved speed hump that match the vehicle, the width of the vehicle, tires for emergency vehicles, but are too wide for passenger cars, so that can be looked into as well. But the important thing is there's some survey work that would have to be done to scout out where are their likely locations to install speed humps so that you have a series of them. I think the standard is they, they shouldn't be closer than 250 feet apart, but they shouldn't be more than 600 feet apart. So in this case, at a minimum, we're probably talking at least four speed humps. Two on Brookhaven, two on Ferndale, and perhaps more, depending on how we can space them and so forth. You also have to find that you have an intersection at Brookhaven and Ferndale. That slows traffic down as well. So that's actually a good feature of the street network out here. So you need to space speed humps sufficient from that intersection so that you're not duplicating the effort of the stop sign and the turns at that intersection.
Did you find that people like just really didn't stop at that stop sign, just kind of cut to the right, you know, just kind of, kind of did a slow roll? Or, because I know that would probably be a concern of mine if I was right there and running that stop sign, because it's easy to do.
Of course. You can go to any place that has speed humps and multi-way stop signs. If there's not a heavy volume of traffic out there to make it self-enforcing, then traffic is going to come to the intersection, and as the car's slowing down, you're going to look left and right, not see anything approaching, and you'll roll through the intersection. And unless a police car is stationed there 24/7, that's just the way people drive.
What, as far as, but I mean, if the vehicles were traveling slower throughout that development, it should reduce the amount of incidents that require emergency service vehicles. So I think at this point, if it's, I know, I believe, as far as speed bumps temporarily, I know a road department is against it for plowing, and I, but I did hear that there are some, Chief, did they just put something in your neighborhood that, and they just, was that big of a deal?
Well, I live in a townhouse complex, so they just placed them in our townhouse complex, but I am familiar with developments in the area I live, and I live in Montgomery County, that have installed these. And again, you know, one of the concerns that I have, and with all due respect to the residents that live, you know, on Brookhaven and Ferndale, we have other areas in the township that are worse than this. So depending on what we do here, I just want the board to understand there's a possibility that we're going to get other requests from other developments in the township or a similar survey or study done and whatnot.
Well, real quick, we shouldn't have to though, because this, this intersection, North Guthrie'sville Road, just that's part of our capital improvement plan for Act 209, as far as a, you know, it's included in the Carlino approved plan, but as well as we have the traffic impact fees for that, to try to improve the level of performance for that intersection. So I guess that's the reason we would even, that's the reason the board, in my opinion, is even looking into this, because that is a problem area on our plan. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't automatically trigger any neighborhood, you know, unless they happen to be on our capital improvement plan and our, within our traffic impact ordinance. As far as the speed bumps, does anyone have an estimated cost? Just roughly what you would think, Andy, it would cost to, just maybe the temporary ones, the rubber temporary. Just roughly what you would think, Andy, it would cost to, just maybe the temporary ones, the, the rubber temporary one to try, if it's okay. Let's just find out the cost first really quick. Do you know what they?
Yeah, I, I did not look that up and it's been a while since I've seen those numbers and the crust of asphalt is increasing all the time. Something in the back of my mind suggests it's, it's either about 3,000 or 10,000 for each individual speed hump. I'll have to look up that to get a better number for you. I don't remember which one it was, but I think it was one of those two numbers. And that's for a permanent one with asphalt. Luke and I had talked briefly earlier in the week that I have used in Upper Gwinnett Township, Montgomery County, before installing speed humps permanently, by rubberized speed humps that get nailed, lack of a better word, spiked into the road. That can be there for, on a temporary basis and you can test them out for a year and see how they work. Because like I say, noise is going to become an issue, perhaps depending on where these are located. And if the noise is a bigger concern than the traffic pre-speed hump, then you can just remove the speed hump altogether and go back to the way it was. Or if you feel that the, there's a positive benefit to the speed humps, then you can take them out and replace them with permanent asphalt speed humps.
Okay.
Just so we, like, part of our concern is when you guys shut off Guthrie'sville, that it's going to get even worse as well. So.
It shouldn't though, because the reason people are cutting through is to, is to not go to Hopewell and make a left, you know, to head north. So it will help, but also you have Mapleview that's going to be open and unfortunately, they're going to have the same issue, maybe. You know, people cutting through to the Bollinger Light through that neighborhood. And then if the giant Carlino, if that road, the extension road comes to fruition, then that's going to be another cut through. So we're essentially going to have three intersections within a half a mile from North Guthrie'sville to 322. So it is, you know, regardless, you're going to see some relief in the future. But I think for right now, if the HOA is okay, if the HOA is okay with trying temporarily speed bumps, George, and I know Kyle's not here, but I'm okay with using the traffic impact fee. I know we collected $150,000 from Hydeaway. With, looking into that option to see, you know, do something. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'd like to see what the costs are and get some feedback from Andy. I have one question for Andy. This is George Sherback. Andy, what experience have you had with the signs that read no through traffic? I know the police can't ticket anybody going through the neighborhoods, but does it act as a deterrent? Is there any sense to a no through traffic sign at both ends?
It's, it's a, it's a sign. Frankly, these are public streets being paid for by tax dollars. I find it difficult to recommend that when all the township residents are paying for the maintenance of these roads, so to speak. The, the efficiency of these signs, who knows? They might work in some places. I know locations where that's been done. The varying, varying positive or negative effect, who knows? I don't think many people go out and re-study after something like that's put in to be able to effectively say whether they've worked or not.
Andy, what about, in, in that, in that drawing, you have like that little area that goes between the woods there where there's no homes? If, if, if we were to explore the option of actually just putting just say a gate across there, that's, it's something that's gonna actually, will actually lose liquid fuels money from that. I don't think we even need to do that from PennDOT's view.
That's a good question. I don't think you're allowed to do that, but it deserves some further study. Again, you're, you're using public monies to pay for the roads. They need to be open for the public use.
Yeah, exactly. And so I think if, if, I think the, the action item would be maybe to, let's, let's see if the HOA would be, you know, amenable, see what their thoughts are on for some temporary speed bumps. And let's explore that option if it's okay with George and if, so if you, if you can reach out to HOA or we can, you know, I don't know when you have any meetings coming up, but maybe we could come and, you know, do a little presentation for you. Or at least provide you an update from, or, and invite you back to the township.
I mean, I, I, I think the size no cut through might make people think twice. I mean, I have other concerns like raised crosswalks. People seem to not even acknowledge that there are crosswalks. Even if that's a stop sign where they're supposed to stop, like you can start walking around the road and they just roll right through it. And the crosswalk that, there's no crosswalk that, between the two sides of Hopewell. And people come flying up that hill. And I mean, I know like 12 stories of kids saying like, oh, they're flying up that hill. I mean, I, I'd like to see like a flashing sign saying crosswalk ahead or a float there. Or just raised crosswalks in the community as well. Cause like I said, like, you know, I'm crossing the street with my dog and this lady's coming from behind me, starts screaming at me, stepping on the road. And I'm like, crosswalk, I'm on the road.
Yeah.
She throws at me, I don't give up. And then starts driving away.
Sure. I'm assuming she probably doesn't live in the neighborhood. Well, then I think, I mean, that's also something we can look into as well, you know, to look at what they're, I'm not even aware of where the crossworks, crosswalks are actually. But that's something we could look into as well, you know, once we get.
Between, on, on Hopewell, between the two communities. There's nothing.
Okay.
Are, are you saying on Hopewell Road?
They have, there's no crosswalk, there's no lines, there's nothing on that road.
No, but are you requesting that a speed, a, a raised crosswalk be put on Hopewell?
Crosswalk, yeah, raised crosswalk. I mean, I think in our community, but I mean, that, I mean, that would deter.
The reason I ask is that Hopewell Road is a state highway, so you'd have to get PennDOT approval. And they're not likely to do that, make crosswalks across Hopewell Road. But raised, raised crosswalk could be a bit problematic for PennDOT approval.
But we can still verify that, but I think you're, you know.
Right.
So, okay. Well, I think let's, if, if it's okay with you, if Mr. Radcliffe, if you want to check with the HOA, then we can send out an email. I don't have, I believe I have Ms. Mabry's information still. I'm not sure if I have. I might have your wife's from last time from the HOA, but we can reach out to you. And once we get this organized and provide you update and to make sure it's present, you know, acceptable to your residents in your neighborhood.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Luke?
So I appreciate it and I understand frustration and appreciate your guys' patience too.
All right. I, I, I'm sorry. I got a, I guess a point of order as moderator here. I, I, there's a number of parties speaking. Was that you, Deputy Chief Edwards?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, but I could, I could, I can, I can make it so that you could speak, but procedurally, it is the chair who recognizes speaker. So if you, would you like to address on this subject?
I would.
All right. Supervisor Winters. There we go. Sorry, go ahead.
My, my question was to Mr. Radcliffe, are you still on Jeff? It's Joe Edwards.
Hey buddy, how you doing?
Good. Hey, listen, I heard you mention a little bit earlier and it, and it actually brought up a concern of ours in the firehouse. You said that you guys were proactively trying to slow the cars down by parking on the street. And I understand your guys' frustration up there. The only thing I ask you guys is to try and cross each, from each other. When you guys park on the street, it is really, really, really tight for the fire truck. If you guys want to do that street parking, maybe stagger it so we can get through that community. Because when you guys park on both sides of the street, on the street, it is extremely tight. I'm worried that one of these guys are going to clip one of you guys going to a call up in that area.
Yeah, I, I can tell them, but I don't know how much.
Because we've been there with just the command vehicles and it's tight, not alone the ladder truck or the pumper tanker.
No, I, I get it. And even when we've done that, like our roads don't have the real curbs. So like people just like roll up around. It's, it's unbelievable what they, what they do.
Sounds good. I just wanted to make you aware of it, Jeff.
All right. Thanks, bud.
All right. Chairman Winters, I have one other party that's interested in speaking on this subject. But it, it sounds like we have the, the bones of direction to staff to proceed. So with that, Dave S.
Thank you, Luke.
Dave Summers.
Dave Summers.
Hey, how you doing, Dave?
I'm, I'm good. I just, a quick question for Andy. The, and, and I'm sure the chief has data on this as well. But the digital, the portable digital solar speed indicators, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I've seen, I, I don't go through Hopewell for the residents. Anyway, I, I'm sure there's some kind of data on those. It's, you know, if you can briefly indicate, i- i- is that a deterrent to speed or not?
It can be a deterrent when it's first put out there, but over time, people tend to go back to their old ways. What many municipalities will do is they'll put the signs out for a week or two. They'll increase the police presence while, while they're out there to support it. And then we'll remove them because there's probably uses for them elsewhere in the townships. And then they'll, they'll have a program that they'll place them out from time to time throughout the year to reinforce it. But like I said, with everything, as people get used to it, they, they tend to ignore them over time.
No, I wasn't referring to the trailer situation like the township has. I was, it, it, there's, there's portable digital. So is, is that the same?
Well, when you say portable, I assume you mean the one on, the ones on wheels. There are others that you can mount on utility poles and things like that. They effectively can be out there permanently. You can try that too.
That's what I was referring to.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Luke, is that it for the comments?
There's no further comment, Mr. Chairman.
Then why don't we move on then to new business? I believe, is there, is that it for old business?
Correct. Let me switch back to the agenda.
Okay. New business, Township Manager's contract. So as everyone's aware, the Township Board Supervisors had appointed Luke as the new Township Manager for this new, at the reorganization meeting this year. And at the time, we had asked our solicitor to prepare a one-year contract for Luke as our Township Manager. And they had been going back and forth with Luke and the board as well to, to get one that's acceptable to, to all parties. And acceptable to, on behalf of the taxpayers. And that's where we're at. We have a contract that is approved, is in writing, and the board is going to be discussing now, whether we're going to be signing or not, if it's approved. So George, is there anything you want to add?
Uh, no, just I want to make sure Luke is fine with the contract.
Correct. I, I'd say just for the, for clarity in the minutes, the, the current draft was distributed by the township's labor attorney on February 8th. It is a redlined copy. I have read and do, would, would happily execute that generous offer.
Okay, great.
Fine then with the contract.
Is there any public comment for this, any comments from the public before we make, make a motion to approve it?
There is no comment.
Okay. Sorry, George.
I'll make a motion to approve the Luke Township Manager contract.
I'll second.
For the year 2021.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Before we leave this, first of all.
Though Chairman, I'm sorry, member, Mr. Scribder, did review the contract. They had no questions. He was okay with this. I do want to announce that to the public as well. He is, you know, not here right now due to the snow. So I do want to, I do want to put that on the record.
Thank you to all the members of the board. I, I do look forward to this challenge. I, I was appointed at a January regular, regular session. Is it the, the board's intent that the, the terms of the compensation described in that be retroactive to the date of my appointment, or shall I do that with just next payroll?
I think, George, it's my, I think we should make it retroactive to the time of appointment.
It should be retroactive. It took a while to get this contract put together. It should be retroactive.
And, and I will, I will make a note too. I believe in the past, when Luke had stepped into the interim manager position back in 16, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Luke, if it's that year or not, but he, he was, he was performing the job that was above his, above his duties at, at the time of hiring. And he was compensated. And that's the one thing the board needs to take a look into for the few months that Luke, from this past year, that Luke did step up as interim manager and make sure that he's, that he's okay with, you know, with what the, what the ranges were before. That's all. Are you okay with that, George?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Great. Now let's move on and subdivision and zoning applications. And congratulations, Luke, and we look forward to working with you too.
Yeah, thank you.
You're doing a good job. I'm confident in you, Luke.
Thank you. And let's move on to the subdivision zoning applications, preliminary plan approval for the Diane Hamel Trust. How are you doing, Vic?
I'm doing all right. How are you guys doing tonight? This is, I don't know, Luke, if you have a chance to pull that plan up, but it's a essentially 49 acres that the Hamels own in three different townships. It's on two deeds and three different tracts of land. It's in about 24 acres in West Brandywine, about 26 acres or 22 acres or so in East Brandywine, and then access through Cowen Township. And really, the whole intent of the plan is to try to rearrange the lots so that it makes a little more sense. Essentially create a lot line that, that creates a lot that's wholly in West Brandywine, on the left side of the, of the sheet there. And that's 24 acres of, of MSI, medical service and institutional land. That little pie-shaped piece at the bottom is the Cowen Township. And then the two lots in East Brandywine are the Lot 2 and Lot 3. And what we're trying to do is just create two 10-plus acre lots. I think they're 12 acres and 13 acres or thereabouts. Right now, for zoning purposes, all the lots would come in on the existing farm drive that's there. And there would be no proposed development in Cowen Township. The access is off Fisherville Road. And essentially, it's just kind of an estate planning tool to, to put the lot lines where it makes sense based on the specific townships. We went to the planning commission last time. The way you guys work, East Brandywine works, is we don't have, or you don't have minor subdivisions. You've got to go through preliminary and final is two separate steps. And we did receive Panoni's review letter and essentially we'll comply with all those items. So we're here tonight just seeking preliminary approval. We'll get everything cleaned up in the interim here and then work with the other townships to get their feedback and then come back to, to you guys once that's all addressed. So it's really like, which is first, the chicken or the egg? And we're trying to get all three townships lined up and, and get agreement with how everything's going to happen.
And we're the first?
Well, we've been to the East Brandywine Planning Commission, we've been to the West Brandywine Planning Commission, and we've been to the Cowen Township Planning Commission. And essentially, everybody seems to be okay. And essentially, everybody seems to be okay as long as the other townships are okay. So it's just, there's so I-dotting and T-crossing. And the one issue that's a little is the access for the West Brandywine parcel on the left there because it's got to come through Cowan and East Brandywine. And we're trying to do it with an easement so that we don't have fee simple strips that have to go all the way out to Fisherville. So we're still working those details out with frontage issues in West Brandywine. But generally, there, whether it ends up being fee simple or a private common driveway, or whether we can do it via easement, those are the, that's the last hurdle that we really have to work out. Now, the two lots in East Brandywine are going to be on a, via a common driveway for those two lots.
Okay. And what happened, what was Panoni, Panoni, you're okay with the conditions that Panoni had? Okay.
We will address all those.
You will address all those?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I could chime in, the applicant has presented before the East Brandywine Township Planning Commission. The Planning Commission draft minutes appear in your packet. The Planning Commission did recommend preliminary plan approval to the Board of Supervisors, subject to a list of conditions that you could see in those draft minutes. And then also Township Solicitor Jonas has prepared a letter that at the board's discretion could serve as the basis of your motion.
Again. Mr. Jonas, I'm sorry. Are you okay with this?
Yes, we, at the manager's request, we drafted a letter that would, upon motion of the supervisors, grant preliminary approval, subject to five different conditions, including compliance with the Panoni letter, which the applicant has said he will do. So this letter is ready to go. On your approval motion, we'll send it out, and we need the applicant to accept the conditions within seven days.
Okay. George, do you have any comments, questions to Vic or to anyone?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to to approve the preliminary plan approval with the subject to the conditions that will be outlined in the letter from the Township of the Diane Hammel Trust.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on, I believe, Vic, you're the next presenter, too, for the Plainbrook subdivision.
Yes, and I will, I'll actually pass it off to John Gerrosif.
I'm here. Thanks, Vic.
There you go.
Good evening, members of the board. John Gerros, on behalf of the applicant. This is the 21-acre plank farm located in the R2 Residential District and the TND2 Traditional Neighborhood Development Overlay District. Luke, if you have that sketch plan available, just to remind the board of the proposed project, describing it, it's the 87 townhouse units to be developed by conditional use under the TND2 Overlay District. We had circulated a sketch plan. I think we had some brief discussion with the board at some point. We spoke to staff. We were directed to go speak to the sewer authority with regard to the possibility of part of the Respill Road extension coming across this property, should it come to fruition at some time in the future. Thank you, Luke. There it is. And you see in front of you a portion of the property depicting where we would anticipate that if it does come to fruition, the Respill Road extension would extend across this property. Now, what that does is it impacts the onsite drainage field area that your ordinance requires us to dispose 150% of our treated effluent on our tract. So what we did is we went to the last sewer authority meeting and posed that question to them. And at the end of a rather lengthy discussion, the authority voted to approve a motion to consider granting the township a right-of-way for the Respill Road extension across this property, along with a commensurate reduction in the onsite sewage disposal requirement to approximately 120% if it should come to fruition at a future time, assuming the right-of-way, as I said, comes to fruition. The motion included a requirement that the plan depict the 150% land area for disposal on our plan and that the authority would consider in the future providing the right-of-way to the township for the Respill Road extension and a reduction of the drip disposal area at some point in the future. So with that, we are ready to then proceed forward with our conditional use application for this project. And we're here this evening to just inform the board of what occurred at the sewer authority meeting and answer any questions that you might have in connection with that. But otherwise, we are prepared to go forward with our conditional use application. I know, and Vic, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably going to take a month or two to get all the testing done that we need commensurate with that application. So we're probably looking at a month or two period before that conditional use application is submitted. And I believe we will need a special exception approval for activity in the steep slopes, correct?
Correct. And all that stuff, essentially, we would get into the full design of the land development to go, like John said, along with the conditional use. So really, we just want to keep everybody kind of in the loop because there's a number of moving parts. And even pending some of the weather conditions, it's probably going to be March or April until we can get out there and do some of the soil testing for some of the stormwater management. So that's essentially where we are. We will have to get DEP out to further evaluate the drip fields. All that will be part ongoing as we, I imagine, as we go through the conditional use application process or hearing process.
Okay. So you're here tonight to discuss whether the board's okay with the municipal authorities' recommendation of the lower, the reducing RSADA requirement of 150% down to 120%?
We're here to essentially report to you what happened at that authority meeting and answer any questions the board may have. I don't know if there's anything really in front of the board to approve or not approve.
I wasn't, okay, that's what I thought. I was making sure. So that's good that you guys worked it out with the municipal authority to, you know, solution that would benefit both parties, so.
Yeah, we were happy to come away with some understanding and we're ready to move forward. We're excited about the project.
And also, just a little housecleaning. I don't know, you might have to have the plank farm or the bank, the trust, write a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting to be removed from the Agicorps security area, just so, just a houseclean, that's going to come up eventually later anyway. Just so you can, you can be removed from there.
Understood. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, great. Good. George, any comments?
Nope, not at this time.
Yeah, Luke, anything?
No, thanks to the applicant for engaging in our sketch plan process. I look forward to receiving their applications. Next step is conditional use.
Thank you, Luke. We look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Thanks. Moving on. Is there any, I have to see this. I don't have the agenda.
Oh.
That's all right. You can say it, too. I mean, it's fine.
There is a, definitely, there's a cognitive loading issue here. Exceeding my ability to multitask.
Sure, okay. Was there no ordinances and resolutions considerations? Public comment on non-agenda items? Is there anything, anything from the public?
I would remind the public that they use the attendee chat feature on the left side of your screen to get my attention. I'm aware in advance of one individual who would like to address our non-agenda items.
Okay.
All right. Joining me by phone is resident Francis Taraski. If you're talking and we can't hear you, you might need to hit star six. Can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, Luke. Jason, George, how are you doing tonight?
Doing well yourself? Good.
Hi, I wanted to talk a little bit about the presentation that was made to the Board of Supervisors by the Ordinance Task Force with regard to the scenic byway overlay district. I just want to go on record as personally being strongly opposed to that as it applies to my property.
Are you referring to scenic road, scenic resource overlay?
Yeah, byway overlay district that's being proposed. My property is included in that overlay. And in reading this, I've come to learn that it will serve only to further restrict my ability to use my property as I have planned for my future estate planning. It will restrict my ability to do a subdivision, which I plan to do for my heirs. I do not build on my property while I am alive and here, but I want to have it prepared for the future. I just want to make you aware that I do not want my property included in this overlay district for various reasons with regards to, you know, restricting my ability to use my property as I should be able to, as my neighbors have. There's already been restrictions placed on my property with regards to zoning change in the R2. Several years ago, it went from 1.5 acres to 2.2 acres as a bulk area for building lot, which was done without my awareness. And that is going to create an additional hurdle for myself. But as I read this proposed zoning overlay, I became extremely concerned as to how it would adversely impact myself, my property, and my family. So I just wanted to make you aware of my thoughts with regards to this. And I will probably have a letter coming to the township from my council to further reiterate my position. And that's really all I have.
No, I appreciate you, you know, voicing your opinion and your concern. And that is definitely a valid concern of yours and an extreme concern of mine is I've been very vocal opposing this scenic overlay district. I think it's just, it's new. It's, there's not many other municipalities, I believe, have even enacted an ordinance such as this. And I don't feel that East Brandywine should be the first. And especially with the extra layer of, layer of government control. I agree 100% Francis. And we are invited, the board, I believe, the board was invited to the Ordinance Task Force for March to actually review this language. So I think, I would think it'd be great to see you there to voice your concern. And if we don't have you there, I'll make sure that it's brought up.
Yeah, I'll certainly, a plan of attending. You know, it's sure it's with good intentions. I mean, for me, I see it a way of creating open space without the property owner really agreeing to it, which to me is not fair. If the person wants their property in open space, then they will decide to do so. But these types of ordinances tend to push the property owner into what's called a restrictive position. And it just doesn't seem to be the way I think our township should be doing it.
So it's good. It's going to be tough to even say, what is the criteria to even, you know, who decides the criteria that actually, you know, specifies what is considered a scenic route, you know, route? And anything, if we were ever going to do that, it would have to be something that there would have to be a survey gone out to all the residents, in my opinion, just to make sure everyone's aware and have your feedback and a vote on it, so to speak, like a questionnaire.
Absolutely. I know this is early in the game, but I just, I, you know, I got, I became concerned because I'm going to be wrestling with the township when I go to do the subdivision because of the zoning change that already took place. So, you know, I don't want further restrictions placed in my, you know, hurdles for me to have to, you know, navigate. So that's why I try to, just on record and
Sure.
make my position known.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, we're here, you know, the board, we're here to represent the voice of the community and the residents. So it's not really too early in the, I would prefer to, to have the township go in one direction or another without, you know, so we're not spending money on something that's ultimately not going to be approved. One, whether it is or not, I'm not sure, but you know what I mean? That's my thought process. I would agree.
I understand. And I have a habit of finding out after the fact that something's happened. Now it's going to have an impact on me, and then I have to deal with it down the road, which is more costly and more time-consuming. So I'm hoping that, you know, to avoid that in this situation.
Sure, sure. No, and I think we'll definitely send you an email just to, just to give you the link for the Ordinance Task Force, if we can get that done. So appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All I have.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Is there any notices? I believe none. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have. No, I have a non-agenda item.
Okay.
An item that we didn't get a chance to put on the agenda. Dennis Mulhern has asked us to take a look at the salary for the tax collector. Now, once again, this would be for the next four-year term. This would not impact him this year. I believe he has given each of the three board members some information. Basically, now he is finishing off his eighth year, second term, the end of this year. So he has gone through the process. He has revolutionized the process now with a software system. And over the years, he has indicated, you know, how many more homes, how many more residents. He's, you know, he keeps track of the phone calls, which are continually increasing from residence, title companies, mortgage companies. And also, I believe, the tax collector in these eight years is collecting, you know, other taxes that weren't there years ago. The current salary of $29,000 and change has been in effect for 20-plus years. It has not changed. Dennis has indicated, and I think has set up guidelines now, where he is really minimizing the use of legal expenses. I believe he's filing his own lien, doing things he can do that we have given in the past to an attorney to do, you know, at a much greater expense. So he just feels with all the work, the extra taxes, that the future tax collector, this is, this is going for the future. Once again, it's not benefiting him this year. But he just made a request that we want, he wanted us to consider, say, increasing the tax collector's salary effective 1/1/22.
Well, I know, I know I've heard great things from Dennis. I know Dennis personally. He's doing a great job. He's collected more than, has a better collection rate than, that I think that we have to date. And I would agree. I think, I believe, the second-class township code, I think, allows the tax collector, he paid up to 10% of what he collects. And I know, you know, what does he collect as far as? Luke, do you know like a rough number or George?
Ballpark about 2.5 million. I'm going to ballpark about 2.5 million comes in through the, through the levy for, for general purposes. And let me, first of all, George, am I interrupting you?
No, no.
Okay. Let me echo the praise for the outstanding work that Mr. Mulhern has done as, as tax collector. I, unfortunately, I think it's going to fall to me to pour some cold water on this. The, the second-class township code allows for the changing of compensation for whoever wins the, the next term. I believe that Mark, please feel free to chime in. I believe that deadline would have been about February 15th. I think we just missed it.
It was extended, I believe, from the, because of the, the current times. I believe everything was extended.
Okay. Yes, it's possible to raise the salary for who, whatever individual wins the next term, which may or may not be Dennis. And there is a, we are right up on that deadline. So this would be something we need to move quick on if it's not already too late.
What's he looking at as far as, George, did he mention to you what he's, what think like a tax collector position with the duties of this township? What he would feel would be reasonable for the next person?
Yeah, based on, you know, the volume of work that's being involved in terms of everything, you know, and once again, with the tax collector hopefully carrying forward his practices of filing his own liens and saving on legal expenses, I think he was looking at 36,000 as an appropriate salary for tax collectors going forward, you know, in the next term, not this year, of course.
So about $7,000 increase? I mean, I personally, I don't think that's out of line. And I think that I've seen the amount of work and how much he is, you know, I keep saying him because it's the current tax collector. The, the current tax collector is all I go by, but he's always there. He's every morning, you know, and every afternoon checking the mail and doing his thing and going out checking with people. And people have come up to me at SnoCo and thanked me for him because he'd go out of his way and talk to their mortgage company and straighten things out for them, you know, with the escrows and whatnot. So I'm personally, I'm, I'm okay with, with an increase to 36,000 and what the change was now. So it's 29,000, just say 500, 36,500, so to speak. I have no, I have no issue with that.
All right, I'm going to Mark, would it be possible, are you still with us?
I am indeed.
Okay, my understanding of, of, this is just a procedural discussion. My understanding is it requires a resolution and there is a hard deadline based on the distance before the next election. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, I haven't been asked to look at this, but I just checked while you, while you were talking with a partner of mine who's been involved in a number of matters with tax collectors. And he just sent me a message saying that any increase would have had to have been done before February 15th.
That was what was in my mind. I am very sorry to be the bearer of that bad news.
So is there any way, Mark, is there something that we could do or look into just to see if the, if this COVID has extended anything?
I'm concerned to look into it. I mean, and like I say, I have not been asked to look at it until just now, so I can, I can certainly look into it, but at least initially, the deadline was February 15th. We can take a look and see if, if any of these statutes involving COVID-19 extended this. My, it's always dangerous to guess, but I'm, there were some deadlines that were involved, but I, my best guess is that this is not going to be one of them, but we can confirm it about 48 hours, 24 hours.
Would it be, would it be advantageous then for us to make a resolution to increase the salary to that pending, you know, your review and to see if it's able to be submitted?
I mean, I would suggest we get the facts first before you take any action on it.
Okay. Well, then we, we, would we be, then we'd automatically be further though, if we're going to push into March, I guess.
If you, you missed February 15th, so whether it's 18th, 19th, 20th, or 25th, I mean,
Doesn't matter, yeah.
It's that deadline. If it's extended, it's going to be extended. I just, I don't think taking action tonight is, is appropriate.
Okay, and that's what we're going to do then, we're not going to take action. George, we're going to have to, you know, take a look at this a little bit more.
That's fine. I think it comes to the impression it had to be done at the second, you know, at the main February, you know, township supervisors meeting, so.
At the, at the, at the monthly regular session. Well, that might be true. We're going to know shortly, so.
Right, I, I think that that is probably prudent advice. We just happened to miss it by three days, which I, I feel so awful.
Well, you know, it happens. So, and yeah, so we're going to move on and just want to thank the road department and everyone for the staff, for all their help in these storms, back to back to back, and everyone helping out with safety and clearing the streets for the residents.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks for setting up.
Luke, Luke.
Thank you.
Luke, Luke.
I I, my, yeah. We have adjourned. I, I, I will mention prior to the motion to adjourn, I did have a note from Mr. Summers relative to a parks project. You, you may recognize Mr. Summers at your discretion, supervisor winners.
No, George, you okay?
Uh, yeah.
I think we should listen. Good, Dave.
Okay, so roll your calendars back, May of 2017, the township and the park and rec committee began the project of the new comfort stations at the community park. And for, for one, you know, one reason or another, that, that, you know, by way of priorities, this project has been kind of pushed to the bottom of the pile. And just recently, Panoni has gotten it back up to speed and I've been trying to work with Panoni through Luke to get this to the point where we can advertise it. There were some minor issues that, that were resolved in the, in electric and so on and so forth. But I didn't want to miss another month and, and wanted to get the board's approval to, as long as it's okay with Luke, after he reviews the Panoni package, to, to go ahead and advertise for the, the comfort station. Like I said, I mean, this project's been on for a long time. It's been budgeted. There's a grant pending on it. And, you know, I just like your approval to, you know, keep this going forward.
I mean, I'm, I'm personally okay. Once Panoni gets the specifications for the bid package together and, and Luke's okay with it and Mark's takes a look at it and he's okay with it, I'm, I'm fine with advertising it to get it going.
Okay, Luke, I don't know if you have any additional comments on that or not.
Just for, for the benefit of Supervisor Sherbach, who was not present when last this was an adjutant item. We do have a C2 P2 grant, which is going to pay half of the cost. The remainder of the cost would be split between the East Brandywine Foundation, which is, the, the funds in there are the result of Parks and Recreation's private fundraising activities. So it represents contributions for the golf outing or to the 5K race. And then also, we have a verbal commitment of support from East Brandywine Youth Athletics to also be the local match. So the, the fiscal note for this is no impact on the general fund, other than the costs that we're, we're paying the the township engineer to develop the bid specs.
And I think we do have to take a look too in the back. I think we have to take a look at the possibility of connecting the municipal authority. Dave, have you, as the parks, has anyone talked, well, you're in the municipal authority about a grab, a gravity, I think we can connect maybe at the, what's that neighborhood? The long driveway, is Holly Drive is off of there? Not Holly Drive.
You're probably talking Kristen Circle?
Kristen Circle, yes, I believe we might be able to, or in the backside of Quail Hill, to, to get down to North Cuthbertville maybe for the, rather than doing an onsite septic, we might be able to tie in to gravity.
The septic was, was going to be run over to phase two of the park, the original maintenance building. And, you know, at some point
Then shoot off.
With my municipal authority hat on, yes, some, at some point, that, that, that may occur, being able to tie into the, to the system.
Right, but the project, the project as it stands now has no additional disposal fields. So the, the, the new, the new comfort station at the north end of the park would be, would have its own tank and pump to the, the existing disposal fields located at the south end of the park.
I understand, I got you. And I think it's great for all you guys' work to get that grant too. That's, that's going to be good help. So, thank you. And George, are you okay with, with the advertising? Once it's, if it's, if Panoni's okay with the bid package presented to Luke and Marcus?
Yep, let's get it going. Let's get it going, yep.
Great. All right, should we make a motion, Luke? Or is it just something that you don't advertise it? We're already at the meeting, so I think we should, okay, just say you're okay.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion to, to, my proposed language would be to, to direct staff to advertise the bid specifications for the the comfort station in phase one of the community park, subject to review by the township solicitor, I believe you heard, and, and meeting the manager's approval. So, so we'll ruin the, the language there, but it's being prepared by the engineer and will be reviewed by myself and by Solicitor Jonas prior to being advertised, but it's not necessary to wait to the next meeting.
Okay. George, did you get that?
Yeah, come on.
The word so moved would do it, so moved.
So what, you just said so moved. Great.
Thanks Lisa, we'll clean that up in a minute.
Adjourn, George. Thanks, Dave, thanks a lot for bringing that up.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Dave. Take care.
All right, George, you going to make another motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, because we had to redo it. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn next.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great evening, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for tonight. Thanks.
Thanks.